General Counsel Renee Trubled, would you mind calling the roll?
Thank you. Yes, good evening. President Bonbright.
Here.
Vice President Keating.
Here.
Director Stroger.
Here.
Director McElroy.
Here.
We have a quorum, and we also have one of our student board representatives here. Shidra.
Okay, thank you. And Shidra, I can't see you because you're right behind the superintendent. Perfect. So if you want to say anything or add anything, just let me know. All right, super. All right. So we will move on to item number five, which is the adoption of the agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
I move to adopt.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions about the agenda? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We have an agenda. So moving on to item number six. Recognition of Staff, Students, and Community. 6.1, recognitions of Gold Star Partner Award. That girl's heart's on fire.
Good evening. Amanda Scott-Thomas, Director of the Community Partnership Office for Tacoma Public Schools. Happy to be here tonight. And we are going to be recognizing one of our fabulous community partners. Tacoma Public Schools defines partnership as a cooperative relationship between students, families, schools, the school district, and the greater Tacoma community. Partners are committed to supporting student academic success and success of the whole child. Partners work with and invest in the education of our children and youth, whose future in turn will affect the quality of life in the entire Tacoma community. When it comes to student success, Tacoma Public Schools recognizes that schools cannot do it alone. And in recognition of an investment of time, talent, and resources for Tacoma Public Schools' students, families, and staff, the Gold Star Community Partner Award signifies honor and thanks to a community partner who has made a difference by doing what's best for kids. Tonight, we have Cecily Crosskey. She's the founder of Girls Hearts On Fire, a robust organization focusing on the empowerment of young women through leadership, life skills, and entrepreneurship. Girls Hearts On Fire focuses on starting with girls in the fifth grade and continues to support them through mentoring through high school. The program's overall commitment is to encourage positive youth development and serve girls in Tacoma ages 10 to 18. Twice a week, for an hour and a half, girls engage in a fun, age-specific curriculum. They do roundtable discussions and participate in creative group activities at their school or in community centers. Participants receive a development portfolio upon completion of the program year, along with letters of recommendation for work and/or scholarships. High school students focus on volunteer opportunities throughout the Tacoma community, and they use those towards high school completion requirements and college applications. In February, Girls Hearts On Fire hosted their fourth annual First Love Yourself Gala, a middle school and high school-aged girls' event at the Courthouse Square Grand Ballroom in downtown Tacoma. It was a girls-only event, providing the girls a red carpet experience, great food, student performances, and an inspirational keynote. A highlight of the evening was an old-school versus new-school dance battle I may or may not have participated in. It was epic, and a wonderful time was had by all in support of Girls Hearts On Fire, whose mission of creating an equitable world for girls to live boldly, thrive, and champion for one another. So tonight, we have Cecily Crosskey here to accept the award. Can we give her a hand?
Absolutely.
Good evening, everyone, and thank you so much for having us here. And on behalf of the Girls Hearts On Fire team and as a Tacoma native, I'm super grateful to receive this award. We are truly honored to be able to partner with young women in our community. We quickly, or we began wanting to empower young women, and we quickly realized that we have been just as much positively impacted by each of the ladies that come through our program. So thank you so much for this honor and for this award. Thank you.
Thank you so much for the work that you do, and we so support, I mean, appreciate your partnership and all you do for our students and the young women in our community. So you're a, we have a whole lot of heartfelt for the work that you do. So thank you very much. All right. Item number seven, the superintendent's report. 7.1, the Whole Child Educator Recognition.
We have tonight Dr. Forrest Greke is going to join us and highlight one of our very important colleagues' groups. So I'll turn it over to Forrest and then say a few comments at the very end.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Garcia, members of the board. On behalf of Tacoma Public Schools and the Whole Educator Initiative, we'd like to take this opportunity to formally recognize our Nutrition Services staff for this month's Whole Educator Board Meeting recognition. Our Nutrition Services staff is responsible for cooking and serving meals to thousands of students each and every day across 50-plus schools across our district. Their work is hard to, they work hard to ensure each child has breakfast and lunch, and at times, meals that can be taken home for additional support to our families. Most recently, in addition to this, our Nutrition Services staff have also implemented a breakfast after-the-bell program this year, which raised student breakfast participation by over 300%. I would also add that more than 15 elementary schools have increased their breakfast participation daily to over 60% during this school year alone. This group of employees keep our students healthy and nourished every day. On behalf of Tacoma Public Schools, thank you for your service and all you do for our students. We're joined here in person by Gina Coleman, who's here for representing the team. You have to, you have to leave stand up. I promised I wouldn't have her come up and talk. I did promise of that. So thank you, Gina, and to the entire team. Just amazing work, as always.
So I know each of us have experienced the amazing work that the Nutrition Services, it is not an easy job. If you've ever, and I know each of you have, but if you're out there being in a school, the prep, the conditions with the shortages that they've had to wrestle through. When I was substituting class, and I oftentimes got a chance to go get a meal and purchase a meal, and there's always a smile. That's not always easy sometimes when our kids are coming through and sometimes saying, "Ah." And to keep on reminding them that, to say, "It's a good day," is very important and not lost on us. So I want to thank the Nutrition Services folks on behalf of the entire Central Office team, as well as their group that regularly comes up with our principal meetings as true team members inside the school. I also want to just take a quick moment, if I can. I want to thank our entire educator team and partners. Spring can be tough. It is March. It is the longest school month of the year. So our kids are in the more school days in March than any others. Clocks change, weather changes. As much as I get excited about the sunshine, I realize, oh, there it goes. It rains again in the Pacific Northwest. Our students and staff and community come together, take a breath during this time. They practice patience, even though when it's difficult. They practice empathy. There are a lot of difficult, challenging times that are happening in our world, and as much as we think to ourselves, well, we've gotten through this milestone, something else comes up. They are truly amazing at how they support each other, and we're very fortunate to have them. I want to take a few moments to give a few quick little highlights, knowing that as soon as I say this, then I have missed someone. But the office staff at Geiger really models this. I got a chance to walk in there again this weekend. It was not a loss on me and Roxanne and her colleagues, how that warm smile is there. How can we help? And it wasn't for me. It was everyone that I walked into that, or saw walk into that office. I just had a chance to sit with some of our colleagues at a really important gathering between our DA partners and some of our Central Office staff, trying to find out how we can stay and continue to grow better together. It's pretty special when we can realize that we have to intentionally work at trying to find ways to continue to be better together. There's a group of unsung heroes, which are our coaches and extracurricular activities, advisors, and liaisons. And oftentimes, we don't get to recognize them. They are sometimes the only reason our kids stay in schools. And this spring, we have some of our highest enrollment in some of our clubs and activities, and our kids, students, performers, athletes, whatever we want to call them on that trip of a moment, there's always an amazing adult that's helping them right behind the scenes. And so I want to thank them. And then another gentleman that you may not have heard of, Greg, works in planning and construction. Greg has been helping us with the cameras installation. That is not a popular job, and it is a complex. So if anyone's out there and knows Greg, I just want to say thank you, Greg, for leading us with grace and patience. So that is my quick update for you tonight. And I appreciate Dr. Greke and the whole child, and definitely appreciate Gina and her colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, Gina, I hope that you and your colleagues all know how much we appreciate the nutrition team from, I mean, this COVID, if nothing else, you shine the light on what nutrition staff does. And you can't go back behind the curtain. You're out in the, everybody knows now. So, and so we are always applauding you. And thank you, Dr. Garcia, for, you know, making those other comments about all the other staff that may not have gotten lifted up yet publicly to be thanked. And, you know, it takes a village to raise a child, and it's the same is true within a school system, and that we, there are many, many players who make the day go well for our children, so, and students, so, and families, and the staff. So really, thank you so much for sharing that. Does anybody else have any comments? Okay, super. You know, well, one more round of applause for our nutrition staff and all the other staff that helped. Thank you. Okay. So number eight, staff report to the board. We don't have one tonight, so we will move on to the public wishing to address the board. We have, our protocols for that process is that school board members encourage public participation in your, it's your civic input is appreciated. Member, board members will not respond to your comments during the meeting. The superintendent or designee will follow up with you after the meeting if action is needed. Instead of speaking at a meeting, you may also send an email to theboard@tacomak12.wa.us. There are two options. The first option is an in-person, open meeting, which is what we're doing this evening. The general counsel will call your name. When your name is called, it's your turn to address the school board. Please speak into the microphone, and please, well, I guess you don't need to leave your mask on for speaking anymore. But you may have up to three minutes to share your comments, or if there are a large number of speakers, the time may be limited. And at the president's discretion, we have a second option, which is written comments. And we, at this point, we have no written comments for tonight. So I will go back to option one and ask our general counsel to introduce anyone in the public who has come forward to speak.
Yes, thank you. Tonight, we have one speaker. It is Ken Paulson on the subject of safety.
Hello, my name's Ken Paulson. I live in Tacoma, and I accidentally think and believe I found a safety issue. So this is what happened. I drove past a school. Bus is parked on the street, so curb-to-curb bus on the street, and it stopped, and it's picking up kids. So I am back far enough, so I see masses of kids. And these are like little, little, little kids, apparently three years old. So I slow down, because I can go 20 miles an hour. I slow down, and I'm going past the front of the bus, and I see, what I'm going to use the term, free-ranging kids coming to the bus. They're like doing their deal. There's adults about 40 feet away at the school, could be an adult right at the bus, don't know that, couldn't see. And I go to me, it just looks like an accident waiting to happen. Now, I want to compare that situation to a school bus that drives around, down the road, stops, sometimes they stop right next to the curb. They put their stop sign out, they put their arm out, everybody stops, the kid gets on the bus, and then they take off. This bus parked on the street, I can go 20 miles an hour legally right next to it, no arm out, no arm. That means a little kid could, right there, and I could run him over just like that, literally. Scary as a driver. Okay. I personally know losing an adult child, adult offspring. You don't have to happen to any of your kids in your schools. It's devastating, especially, I came here and talked and told you this. My granddaughter was at Tacoma High School four years ago. A gun went off. I went to the school. Wife, grandma, my wife said, "Hey, get to the school." I drive to the school. So I'm there, standing around. TV reporters are already there. A guy comes up to me, says, "Hey, Ken, what are you doing here?" We talked a few minutes. He comes back to me, he said, "You want to be interviewed on TV right now?" I said, "No, I don't." But if something happened like I described, I'd drive to that school, and I'd be interviewed. And I'd be telling exactly what I told here. And if nothing's done, I want to tell you, heads will roll. Did my time out?
Yeah. Well, thank you so much. And superintendent, would you make sure that someone checks in with, okay, perfect. Lining you up. Okay. Okay.
And we don't have any written comments tonight, but I do want to note that we have decided a post-COVID protocol to keep the written comment portion available to members of the public, that that way we can provide that as a second option. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Item 10 is the consent agenda. Do I have a motion for the consent agenda?
I move to adopt the consent agenda.
Do we have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions or concerns about any items on the consent agenda? Hearing none, I call the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Passes four to zero. Item number 11 is policy issues, and there are no policy issues tonight, so we'll move on to the financial report.
As a point of order, I think maybe we've got a different agenda. We do have one policy matter tonight, 11.1.
Oh, we do. No, that's okay. That's okay.
Thank you. I was going. I'm very excited about it, so.
I can't, I can't wait. Okay. Sorry. I have a, so, Policy Matters, 11.1, the first reading of Policy 3224, Student Uniforms and Student Dress Codes.
Thank you. The general counsel recommends that the Board of Directors review the proposed revised Policy 3224, Student Uniforms and Student Dress Codes, and provide feedback before a second reading.
Great.
So if we make a motion, then we get to discuss it and make a comment on it?
Exactly.
I'll move to approve.
Thank you. And do we have a second? Okay. And now I'll open the floor up for comments.
Definitely. I know that we're going to read it and then bring it back to you. I just really want to point out the use of gang-related apparel and how that is subject to, that's like very subjective, and oftentimes, our views as adults are out of date with what can be considered gang-related apparel. When I was in high school, there was a gang called the Knockouts, and what they would wear was black JanSport backpacks and tie them right here. So if it was tied above there, they were not a knockout, but if it was tied here, they were a knockout. So it's kind of like, just remembering that, there's a lot of emphasis on gang-related apparel in that policy, and just reminding, like remembering that it's subjective, and our views as adults sometimes is out of date with what is a gang member and what is not. And, you know, bonnets and headscarves, we definitely saw bandanas a lot during the pandemic. They're not always gang-related. So I just really want to bring that point out loud, and especially because the policies are not to draw any ire to marginalized groups. And often, when we use the word "gang-related apparel," we know the exact marginalized group that's going to impact. We know the students that are going to be called out for gang-related apparel, even if they are not wearing gang-related apparel. So I just want to bring that point up. I like everything else, but I'm just saying, there's a lot of emphasis there, and I want to say it out loud.
I so appreciate that. And we're going to have a conversation with our Equity Policy Review team as well, and I may ask members of the community to, for help in rewording this, and if you have any thoughts and a way to reword it too. So I was listening to you, I was thinking, maybe we find a way to point out that any type of apparel that promotes violence, right? Because it's not necessarily has to do with what we think of as a stereotype of a gang. So thank you for bringing that up. The words do matter, and I'm excited that we get to look at this. And I know Dr. Garcia worked firsthand with a group of students to help make some of these revisions.
So it's exciting. This was a discussion with a student group that represented all the secondary schools. And then they went into anticipating that you folks may make some policy revisions, what would be the right kind of even adjustments potentially in the implementation. And so they definitely led us into a place of pausing to say, how will the adult have a space to learn the difference, and how will there potentially even be a restorative conversation to educate the adults? And then we worked with a representation of educators to then look at what the students thought and their feedback. And so I think as, if this continues to progress at the board level, I think you'll see evidence that addresses those concerns.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? This is a first reading, so as we said, we will be hearing this again at our April 14 board meeting. Is that right?
That's correct, President Bonbright. And the policy is also now on the board's webpage, along with a feature for members of the public to provide feedback directly about the policy as well.
Fabulous. Okay. So we don't have to vote on this since it's first reading.
Correct.
So we will move on to financial report. The district's next quarterly financial report is planned for May 2022. If you're interested, the monthly financial statements can be found on the district's Curriculum and Instruction, we have no issues to discuss tonight about that. So moving on to Policy, Business Matters, 14. We have 14.1, the approval of acceptance, approval of acceptance of additional energy efficiency grant funding from Washington State Department of Commerce.
The Director of Budget, on behalf of the Chief Financial Officer, recommends that the Board of Directors approve acceptance of the additional energy efficiency grant, grant funding from the Washington State Department of Commerce in the amount of $245,987, and expenditure of funds in accordance with accepted guidelines. Funding source, Washington State Department of Commerce.
Do we have any motion?
Move to adopt item 14.1.
And do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and double-seconded. Do we have any comments or questions about this issue? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, it is adopted four to zero. Item, thank you, Kristin. 14.2 is approval to negotiate and award the design-build alternative method contract with Neely Construction Company for the Ninth and Broadway Building Ground Floor Tenant Improvements Project.
Yes, the board previously approved tenant improvements for the first floor and Ninth and Broadway. This is a continuation of that process for tenant improvements on what we consider the ground floor or bottom floor. The Chief Operating Officer recommends that the Board of Directors approve the superintendent to negotiate and award a contract to Neely Construction Company for the design-build alternative method for Ninth and Broadway Building Ground Floor Tenant Improvements Project.
Do we have a motion?
I move to adopt item number 14.2.
All right. Do we have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions on this issue? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? It passes four to zero. Other business, 15.1, ratification of the 2021 to 2024 collective bargaining agreement between Tacoma School District Number 10 and the membership of the International Union of Operating Engineers Local 302, the bus drivers.
The Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources recommends that the Board of Directors ratify the collective bargaining agreement between Tacoma School District Number 10 and the membership of the International Union of Operating Engineers Local 302, bus drivers.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I move to adopt item 15.1.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions on this issue? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, it passes four to zero. All right, thank you, team, for that. Item 15.2, the ratification of the 2021 to 2024 collective bargaining agreement between Tacoma School District Number 10 and the membership of the Pierce County, Washington Building and Construction Trades Council.
The Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources recommends that the Board of Directors ratify the collective bargaining agreement between Tacoma School District Number 10 and the membership of the Pierce County, Washington Building and Construction Trades Council.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
I move to adopt item 15.2.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those, any comments or questions? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right. Congratulations, it's passed four to zero.
Thank you very much.
Well done, thanks to all involved for both of those issues. Okay. 15.3, Approval of District Asset Preservation Program Annual Report.
This is an annual agenda item, which we bring to the board each year, where we're required to do a facility assessment of our sites, which is required by OSPI. The Chief Operating Officer recommends that the Board of Directors review the annual report in compliance with OSPI's asset preservation programs, building condition standing.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I move to adopt item 15.3.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions about this? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, it passes four to zero. Wow. Okay. Moving on to board, board comments and reports. Do we have a volunteer to go first?
Shidra.
In terms of updates. Oh, yeah, sorry. Shidra, come on up.
Hi, I'm Shidra, and I go to SMI. And I'm a junior, and junior year, we're supposed to be, like, signing up for summer programs over the summer, and I just like to appreciate my school and the staff there. They've given us a lot of opportunities. I've applied for a lot of stuff, and I can't wait to, you know, do over the summer. Thank you.
It's fabulous. Thank you for sharing. All right. Director Stroger, would you like to report?
No, not tonight. That belongs to President Bonbright when it comes to J. Mac. I actually don't have a report, but I do have just a heartfelt shout-out to all of the students in our school district. Like, the reality of it is this, if anybody's had to adjust day in and day out, it's been our young people. And it's not that we, we don't honor them as much as we should, but we don't honor them as much as we should. All right, there's always opportunity to uplift our students. Just left a basketball game, students and families out there, young ladies going hard on the court. I didn't want to leave to get here to this meeting, but here I am. I understand my priorities. But shout-out to our students, man, just for persevering and really focusing. Like, in the blink of an eye, we are already here in March. You blink again, it's going to be May. Blink again, it's going to be June. So just encouragement as well for our young people, keep your nose to the ground, keep pushing, and do the things that are necessary to get yourself to the next step. It's going to be tough, but you can do it, and we're here to support you. That's what I have for our young people today.
Awesome. Thank you. Always, you know, always heartening.
I'm ready.
Director McElroy?
Okay. So over the past two weeks, I've been getting more acclimated with our district. It's my favorite thing to do these days. So this past week, this week, I went to the Head Start Policy Council meeting, which was a lot of fun. So I personally, I've been involved in them as a teacher before, and now sitting to be like a silent observer and not do anything and just watch these parents work. I think it's really vital, you know, when people think of like schools, they think about PTAs and things like that, and Head Start Policy Council really is getting parents involved before their child has even entered the K-12 system, teaching them the policies of the school, teaching them how things move and how things shake. So it was not surprising to them to have a board member at their meeting. It was surprising to them that it was me. They were like, "Hey, girl." I'm like, "Hey." So, and also, when I did it, because it was on Zoom, but our next one will be in person, but it was on Zoom, I was at my preschool as well. So my kids got to come behind the screen and wave at the parents, so that was a lot of fun. We got a report.
We got a report from the Director of Early Learning, Michelle Lewis, and it was very thorough in explaining the new schools that we might be putting early learning programs into, which is really exciting. Other than that, then I also went on a tour of First Creek Middle School. I know a few teachers already. It was really nice to get to know the staff. I was there for a lockdown drill. That's comical if anybody has ever spent time in schools and middle school students. I was in a room with sixth graders during a lockdown drill. We did a great job of everybody silently laughing to themselves under their mask, in our quiet quarters, and listening to our teachers. So I was really proud of them and their work that they did there. Got to tour a language arts class, a science class, went to their band room. Their band program is awesome. So we did talk about band in the schools that don't have it, but let's talk about the schools that do too. So I'm really proud of the work they're doing over there at First Creek. They have a lot of partners in the building before and after school during the day. So kids know that they have resources outside of just their teachers, outside of their counselors. So I'm really proud of the work that they're doing there. Other than that, I have a few more tours coming up, so I'm excited for our next board meeting to tell you about all the other schools that I went to. Thank you.
Thank you. How exciting. I'm glad that you're, now we're all sort of being able to get out more with with loosening up of the requirements a bit. So thank you for that. Vice President Keating.
Yeah, well, I'll end with basketball. Well, no, well, so I did, I'm sure I did a lot of other things, but really, I was also at the game that Director Stroger was at. So I'm really like, that's where my head is. And I kind of forgot what what else I've been doing the last couple of weeks. So but I was at Mount Tahoma yesterday for their, I think it's every two weeks, their LGBTQIA committee. And they're doing such an amazing job in partnering with the GSA students and other students and staff. And there was a community member that was there. And so we just had a really robust conversation. And I actually brought my drug, my own kit along. And so there was a really amazing conversation between the students from different schools in relation to GSAs and the difference between how, just the differences between how students have an opportunity to engage with staff on issues. So it was just like a very encouraging and, I don't know, I'm just very impressed with the dedication that the students and staff have together on just improving the culture and climate. And and just the collaboration of student and staff, I think, is probably my, what I appreciate the most. So and then the, on Tuesday, I did attend, because I can't be in two places at once yet. But I did go and watch the Baker, the girls' basketball, Baker and Hilltop game at Hilltop on Tuesday. And then this afternoon, and then at the same time, Mason and Gray were playing. And so I have a soft spot. I have nieces who play girls' basketball, so I'm like very much about girls' basketball. So anyway, so then today, it was Gray and Hilltop, and it was tied. When Cory and I left, it was very difficult to leave, and we got here just in time. And so I don't have a final score yet, but it really looked like they were going to go into overtime, because when we left, it was 34 to 34. And man, the, I mean, even from the game I saw on Tuesday, like there were students, like it was just students and families, like all in a gym together. And it was so exciting and inspiring. And today, again, like Cory and I had to leave and come here, which we appreciate being here and was really hard to leave. So I don't know, it's just very exciting and makes me just like excited for other opportunities. I know that Silas had a choir performance last night, and I just unfortunately was too tired to be able to go to that. But I'm excited that there are events and there are things that we can start going to and just seeing, just going and celebrating our students, so.
Thank you. I love that, because our students have so many talents and interests. And I think during COVID, that they were buried behind behind masks and behind Zoom calls. And and so this is just great to have everybody out together. So thank you for that. Does anybody in the room happen to know the update on the score on the tied game?
I'm working on it.
Okay, awesome. I thought you might be. I saw you working on your your phone there. Well, I'll just do my report. I have, I've had a couple of big meetings in the last, since our last board meeting, which have been exciting. The first one is J Mac, which I'm going to do this time. And next time, Director Stroger is definitely going to do the J Mac report.
It'll be in the minutes.
It'll be in the minutes.
I'll just let you go. No, I did have to leave J Mac early. I wouldn't just sneak out on my side.
No, he was there, he was there. He just had to leave a half an hour early. And so I just, he didn't want to be responsible for missing to report. But anyway, we had, as you know, J Mac has three themes, justice, equity, diversity, inclusion, which is Jedi. Second one is health and safety, which includes security. And then the third one is community wealth building. And for the last three months, since the beginning of January, anyway, we've had each month being one of those topics. So we did Jedi in January, February was community wealth building, and March was health and safety. And we have picked two topics within each of those themes. And so we had present, and we've been having presentations on those topics. And so this month, we had Victor Rodriguez from the, who's the Equity Manager at the Tacoma Pierce County Health Department, did a presentation in Health in All Policies, which is a fabulous tool that the Health Department has developed that they use for their own policies and their own focus on how equity and health in all the policies that they do within the community are represented. And it gave all of the rest of us and the other entities on J Mac an opportunity to think through and discuss how we could adopt that, some of that from their tool. And and I, and, you know, it was, it was nice to be able to share what Tacoma Public Schools does, which is actually looks a lot like that, only it's a more expansive and more inclusive, and, you know, in terms of our Equity Policy Review Team. So that was kind of exciting. But this Health in All Policies considers a look at social and emotional environmental conditions of all policies and health. And and really prioritizes areas, and, you know, that aren't in the community, that aren't necessarily having easy access. And so for them, you know, we all play a role in that, all of the, all of the entities on J Mac. So it's a, again, an opportunity for sharing and integrating thought, and then figuring out how we all want to align our work as as public agencies and capitalize on what each other is doing, not reinvent. So it was just, there was a lot of excitement around that. And then we invited Heather Moss, who's the Director of the Human Services Department for the county, Pierce County, to give an absolutely spectacular presentation on the comprehensive plan for homeless, to end homelessness. It was mesmerizing, and the conversation was incredibly rich. And so that was, it was phenomenal. And the plan is just that, it's a plan, it doesn't have, you know, there wasn't an ask at the end. It was more of an educational component. But the county has done a lot of great work, and this is the place to have these conversations. And so we're all sort of musing on that, but it was very electric, I will say, in the group. So that was fabulous. And then, and so that was J Mac. And then the other meeting that I I went to this recently was the Foundation for Tacoma Students Board. And that was awesome also. But I will say the one piece that came out of that that I want to share with everyone tonight is on April 5th and 6th, the Foundation for Tacoma Students is is having their their annual event, and it's Charting Our Future Conference. And it is, actually, I forgot to write down where it is. Is that at the Community Center? The Civic, I'm not sure where it is.
If you're a staff member, it's on the hub. The information is on the hub.
Yeah, okay, the information's on the hub. And otherwise, I think you could probably just, if you're a public member and are interested in this this event, it's going to be, you know, two days of lots of great conversations and workshops about, you know, working with youth. It's there, you know, Tacoma Public Students, Schools, you know, students works for cradle to career kind of outreach. So they're looking at, after you've graduated from high school, you know, how do you move on to whatever's next? And how do you have success in in, you know, moving through your life? So there are lots of great, you know, pathways that are going to be shown at this conference. And I know that Tacoma Public Schools is actually sponsoring an opportunity for our, a lot of our students and teachers and staff to go. So feel free to, you know, if you need help with that, you know, check in with with the Superintendent. And if you can't, you know, if there you go in and just please sign up. It's it's during spring break, so hopefully people can, you know, will have the time to go. The other exciting thing which I learned about was that in day two, there is a focus on the the students and encouraging students to come. They've got the the Mayor's Commissions.
The Mayor's Youth Commission.
Youth Commission is, you know, is coming. They're trying to get the word out to have other students come. And here are lots of fabulous presentations and really engaging things that are attract for youth to get engaged in in the work. And so that, and students are free, and that's the second day. So make sure if you're interested in it and you're around on spring break and you feel like this is something you want to do, go online. I'm sure you can either go to Foundation for Tacoma Students, or which is graduate Tacoma.org, I believe. Or or you can go and maybe with the Youth Commission and see how they're, how they're pitching it. So those are some awesome opportunities coming, coming up for stuff for folks during during the break. And I think that's.
Madam President, I have a few announcements, and I think Director Keating has an announcement. So I will let Director Keating, if you. Yes. So Hilltop won. So Hilltop won the championship. And what I also want to say is, both those teams, those girls, they're strong. They were so respectful of of the, like, they were so impressive. And so, yes, A-team won. I'm telling you, I had such a great time watching both teams and the adults behind them, the coaches, and the staff that support them. Like, it, and so congratulations, Hilltop, and also congratulations, Baker, or Gray, excuse me, because, man, that was a tight game, and it was, it was really, it was really fun.
Thank you. I'm so glad we got closure on that tonight. It's nerve wracking.
It's fun to live in the excitement of our our kids. So thank you, Director Keating. I was remiss, I forgot a couple of, I think, key milestones that are coming up. Director Stroger reminded me today, our graduations will be hosted at the Tacoma Dome this year. So if you're a senior or a family or you're excited about graduations, rest assured, we are planning a full in-person graduation ceremony, and it will be in the Tacoma Dome. So I think Foss Falcons really got the rain on them last year. There will not be rain on them this year. So just an announcement there. And then Director McElroy reminded me that it's important for all those families that are out there to know that if, you know, we have supports available. If for some reason, if you need assistance with your cap and gowns, we know this is a difficult times. Please start with your school administrator. But we also have additional help of student funds. And and we want folks to know that that all students that have met the requirements, that this is an important time for them. And we want, we don't want there to be any barriers for them. So if you're out there, or if you know a student that's in need, that may need support, please contact any of our high school principals, or you can even contact the Superintendent's office, and we can connect you with the Help a Student Fund.
Perfect. Thank you so much. How exciting, and in-person graduations, this is inside where, yeah, I was at Foss last year when it poured on us. That was lots of fun. Anyway, so.
Cosmic rivers is I think the term they're using now, cosmic rivers.
And yet, and yet I loved it. The students, the graduates were just hanging with it. They just were not at all phased. They just, you know, took their mortarboards and put them up so that they were like an umbrella, and it was, it was great. Everybody enjoyed it, and it it cleared up. It was just a little breeze through dump. Okay, anybody else have any last minute comments before we move on? Okay. Item number 17, announcements for our next regular board meetings. April 14th, we will meet back here at 6:00 PM for a board business meeting. April 21st, we will have a study session. And April 28th, again, for a board business meeting. So three meetings in April, and we will have had a week of spring break before that. The week, what is it, the fourth through the eighth is spring break. Was this the work week? So everyone be safe and enjoy whatever it is that you have on task to do. And hopefully you'll get some good family time, everyone. And but do stay safe, and we look forward to seeing you back here in in a few weeks. So with that, we are adjourned.